Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for being here tonight. We're delighted, always delighted to see all of our citizens in our audience. And of course, I want to warn you, if you misbehave, the jail is just right down the hallway here now. And we do have police officers sitting at the back there, so I think they're looking at us more than you. So, we're delighted to have you. If you'll please rise, we'll have a novocation tonight by Dr. John Kelly, the superintendent of the Independent School District of Pearland, and our police chief, Johnny Spars, will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance. There he is.
By your heads, dear Lord, we praise you, thank you for everything you do for us every day. We thank you for the blessings in the midst of the hurricane and the storm, and in its aftermath. We thank you tonight for our city leaders, for our council, our mayor, our city manager, and all the administration, all the folks that make it work. We especially ask and pray for help for those who are without a home and without a car here in our midst. Give us the wisdom to know how to help those folks. And tonight, Lord, if you'd give wisdom to the folks that are making our decisions here, the city council and the mayor, we ask these things through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Texas pledge.
On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Well, thank all of you for being here. We have a pretty full agenda tonight, a number of consent agenda items and a number of council action items. And in my agenda, I'll be following the agenda, if you have a copy of it, I will be following it as my guide. Roll call is the next item, item three on our collective agenda. And our entire council is with us tonight.
David Little is out.
Except for David Little, who is on vacation, and also is a working vacation for at least a couple, three days. And moving down into item four on our collective agenda, citizen to be heard. And I have about three, I think I have three requests. One of them is, Nancy, where are you? There you are, come on up here. She's going to share with us a great event that happens every year. And she'll fill us in on that.
This is a different place, so I'm a little confused.
You got the podium.
My name is Nancy Kazanke, the 314 Rustic Lane in Friendswood, which is actually Pearland DTJ, but I like the confusion part of it all. I'm here today to talk about the Pearland Rich and Stays Walk, which is going to be held on November 11th at the Recreation Center from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. This is our fourth year with the walk. Last year, we had over 300 participants, and this year, we're hoping to get maybe 400. So, I hope to have all of you there. And Mayor's going to be speaking at the introduction to the walk. And we have, Ed Thompson will be doing the invocation like he's done in the past. So, hopefully, you'll come join us. I also have some flyers for y'all and some other information, so I'll just pass that out.
Thank you for that. Thanks for being the strength behind that particular organization that is doing this each year. Let me see if I can pull this together here. If you'd like, you can pick up a copy of this on the way out. Probably be some on the table. You have some, Nancy, you gonna put on the table? Outside or inside, either way. Maybe on the inside, and maybe I can pick up a copy of that and be a part of this process. Good, with that in work, let me move down to the next item, which is Adrian from Papa Creek. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you. I am Adrian La Bombard. I live in Country Place. Country Place, as you know, was annexed by Pearland in 2013 and has been an integral part of this community ever since. We are the home of the Country Place Golf Course and very recently became the host of one of the pears that has become part of the Pearland landscape and part of our identity. And most recently, have worked very closely with Pearland in Harvey Recovery. I wanted to take a few moments tonight to bring to your attention a very important event that happened at Country Place this past week, which I think is crucial also to Pearland itself. We held our homeowner elections this past week and elected new leadership at Country Place. And what I want to talk to is the fact that we had voter turnout of 60 percent, over 60 percent actually, which I think is actually rather unique for a community of our size, not just in Pearland, not just in Texas, but I think in the United States itself. I want to simply ask a general request tonight. I would like in the years ahead to make this more specific. But I look forward to Country Place and other communities in Pearland working more closely with Pearland, the Pearland City Government, to bring us all more closely together. I think a voter turnout of 60 percent speaks to something where every Country Place resident is a winner. There are no losers. And indeed, I think with the voter turnout of 60 percent, I think all of Pearland is a winner from this. And I look forward to the day where, when working more closely with Pearland, all of Pearland can look at a number like 60 percent as being a low turnout. I'd like to see it where every single community has turnout of much higher than that. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you so much. We also have one other requester, and that is Larry Markott. Thank you for being here tonight, Mayor Larry.
Larry Markott, 3606 Inverness Court. I'm here to talk about the intersection at Dixie Farm and 518. The other day, I, my wife, were going to town. And we went down, and we were backed up clear to the first big house there across from where the last entrance into the back of Walmart is. And it took a number of lights for us to get through. Something's gotta be done. I don't know what it is, there's no space, but something's gotta be done. Normally, we can get five cars, maybe if we're lucky, seven cars that have run a couple, that have run the red light to get through. And it's going to become a more and more dangerous intersection and needs to get fixed. How, I can't help you. But in addition, Alvin Ambulance uses that route to get to the hospital. And if they're backed up with a critical patient, they're in trouble, as is our fire department at times, if they're coming back that direction, which probably won't happen very often, but it will. Our emergency vehicles need to get through there as well. So, it needs to be looked at. I don't know how you fix it, but it needs to be looked at and some attempt made to fix it and maybe to give a little more light time on that direction. And that'll back up the other three directions. So, it's a major problem, and maybe trying to add a lane in there would be helpful. Thank you.
Appreciate those comments, Larry. Another on the way. Tony.
Yes, sir.
There you are. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having my, taking time. I'm Tony Barsona, I'm a resident in the Pine Hollow neighborhood. I have a lot of my residents here, we're talking, we want to, we addressed some issues with Councilman Perez and Councilman Carbone earlier about the flooding issues we had in our neighborhood at one specific spot that has had a history of flooding. If my neighbors can stand that we're flooded, and this is on one street, Pine Tree Drive, somehow, I did not flood. But I'm here to help this neighborhood. I have one resident who has flooded five times. And this, and one of the things we were talking about, points was, we understand this was a catastrophic event, 50 inches and all that, but these neighbors flooded within the first eight hours of the rain. And we would like help. And I think Councilman Perez, Carbone, and I've talked to Councilman Ordno about some of the issues we have. We're looking for, we're looking to work together. We're not looking, but there's gotta be some issues with the buildup that has built up on 518, the neighborhoods that have been on the side, and there has not been any resolution to this. There was a lawsuit that was brought 10 or 15 years ago after Ike, that supposedly some improvements were supposed to be made. We don't think they were made. And we're looking for some resolution, because this isn't about another hurricane. This is about an everyday event. There's been rain on Tax Day or Memorial Day, where one of my neighborhoods flooded five times, has flooded. We, we're just looking for some help, and I think we've started good conversations today, but I want everybody to be aware of it. And these are the faces that are having to deal with hundreds of thousands of damages to their homes. And we don't want to continue to do this. Our home values are going down, which affects everybody. And we're looking for some help, so we can work together.
I appreciate those comments, and of course, we're not all, we're very unhappy with what has happened there and in other places in our community as well. It's just, it's just crazy what our weather has done of recent and what, we're looking at, what other causes for the flooding, as well as the Harvey. And Harvey, you know, he, I thought he was going to try to rent a house there the way he hung around so long. And the only thing that saved him, he wanted some A2 Fay in the Edinburgh, Louisiana. But it wasn't nice while he was here, and I appreciate the distress that each of you have gone through and that all of us have our concern about that, obviously. Moving back into our agenda, we've, we do have a, was there anybody else that did not understand the rule of speaking with a, with a, one of these pieces of paper to, we have to have that because we want to make certain that it does write up into our minutes. And then to be able for you to speak, we have to have that to make sure, to authenticate the fact that you did speak at the meeting and that your comments are on the record. And this piece of paper was, is a backup on that. So, I appreciate each of you making the comments you've made, and thank you so much for that. Moving in our agenda to item five on our collective agenda, which is consent agenda. Are there any items of the consent agenda which consists of items A through K that needs to be removed at this point, or the council would like to remove?
Yes, Mayor, item E.
Did I hear it?
Item E.
E, is it easy?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, E isn't easy. Okay. And the other? Hearing none, no other, I'll ask Councilmember Carbone if he will present the consent agenda for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through K with the exception of E, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we're in discussion. Are there any items, discussion items relevant to the motion? Hearing none, we do have motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
And Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Councilmember Carbone, would you present item E for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2017-180, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Yes, Mayor, I'll go ahead and provide the report on this item. This is Harris County MUD 509. This is a MUD district that's located along Pearland Parkway, in the vicinity of Pearland Parkway and Hughes Road. This, they're requesting the annexation of 14 acres, just slightly more than 14 acres into the MUD district. They, it requires city council consent before they can have property annexed into the MUD. This particular MUD is primarily composed of the Riverstone Ranch development, and this is additional acreage that will be added into that. Originally, it was S.H.S. Partners who developed, entered into an agreement with the city for this development. It was anticipated at the time to be about 660 acres. At the time, they owned 328 acres, and the MUD consisted of that 328 acres with the anticipation that they would add property into it until it got to the full 660 acres that were anticipated to be added into that development. This 14 acres is part of that 660 acre development that would be considered to be Riverstone Ranch. There are a couple of other parcels that are non-contiguous, but the vast majority of this particular MUD is comprised in that area. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then I believe, I think MUD council is here tonight. It looks like the council for the MUD district does not appear to be here.
Okay. Council, have any question or comment on this item at this point?
Yes, Mayor. And I apologize, I could not see, could tell from the packet exactly what the 14 acres was. I just wanted clarification and where that site was located before I voted up or down on that.
Given the fact that the MUD district, the attorneys for the MUD district are not here and can't answer any questions, I would probably recommend that council, if you would want to postpone this item to a future agenda.
I move to postpone.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, should I comment on the motion? Hearing none, motion favor that motion?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion carried six to zero.
That completes our consent agenda items. Let's move now on our agenda, if you have one, to item six, which is new business. New business item number one, Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, second final reading of ordinance number CUP 17-00013, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we're now in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second and final reading for a conditional use. This is for a package off-site liquor sales establishment. This is an existing strip center on Pearland Parkway and 518, close to the HEB, and before you for consideration.
Council, have any question or comment on this item?
Mayor, I did have a comment.
You knew I would.
Yeah, it's getting to be a little bit out of hand, I think, on liquor stores coming in. We've got three approved already and one pending, and then one for tonight, and that's just in a particular area. They're all within a walking distance of each other. And I think that's real crazy, you know, that we're continuing to approve those, which I won't approve them for sure. But, you know, all the time in Pearland, we've been spending a lot of money on parks, walking trails, soccer fields, baseball, all the amenities that you could have, we've got a good school, and that's the reason people are moving to Pearland. And I have yet, in all my discussions, and been on council for 13 years, I've never seen it, anybody come and say, hey, we're moving to Pearland because you got a lot of liquor stores. I just don't think that's it. And I'm totally against that. You know, we're spending a lot of money doing things to, and to ask people to come into our city and live in our city, and it's something they can be proud of. And when you start looking at the number of stores, or liquor stores that's coming in, and literally, the ones that's coming in, is coming in mainly on the east side, and they're really within walking distance of each other. I mean, and this one that is on there tonight is for, down at HEB, it's what, four doors down from HEB on Pearland Parkway. And I talked to Jim over there, the manager of HEB, and he said, I told him, I said, you know, I supported y'all coming into here, but I don't support the liquor store. And he said, well, good. He said, I don't either. And he said, you know, I sell wine and beer in my store here, and they walk four doors down and buy wine, beer, and, or liquor. So, that's, that's my concern. You know, I'm sure it'll probably be a nice place or whatever, and you know, that's fine. But, you know, how many do we really need in Pearland? How many do we need to be within walking distance of, you know, in Pearland? And so, I'm totally against it. I've already voiced my opinion that I wouldn't vote for this one. I won't vote for the next one, whatever it comes up, and the one after that. You know, it's just astonishing to me that we're allowing so many to come in at one time. And I think if nothing else, we need to look at our planning and zoning and make this a special interest. You know, I had one of the commissioners tell me that, you know, county commissioner says, hey, you know, I got two liquor stores in front of my location, you know, in front of his house, basically. And so, you know, I just think it's kind of gotten way out of hand. And so, I just want to let you know, I'm not really pleased with this, and I won't vote for it.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. I, we, Clay, if I remember correctly, we have a future discussion item where we're going to talk about potential modifications of the UDC that could govern where the, where these liquor stores would be allowed and talk about any other criteria we may want to introduce.
There is something, work with the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at different, some background information first and foremost. It may or may not include additional regulations or requirements, I mean, it's really up to, you know, that's gonna be one of my choices, but, so I think first is sort of an information scan, and that's what they're prepping up and getting ready to look at. So, any, if they were to recommend an ordinance, obviously, that would take a process to have text amendment and then the JPH and, you know, first, second, reach for councils. So, that is an option, but my understanding is that's just starting to percolate up.
Okay. So, my comment is this, independent of my opinion of liquor stores, I don't particularly personally care to see them that close together, but I can't say that I'm comfortable governing off of my opinion as opposed to criteria that can be written down. You know, it's proximity to HEB, to be honest with you, it, reducing HEB's competition is not really a concern of mine. Allowing the market to do what the market does is generally a factor when we, when we look into what we're going to allow, what we're not going to allow. You know, reducing competition is, you know, I don't think that's an appropriate factor for us in this body to look at. But I do think that there is a discussion to be had. We've said this over and over again, the citizens voted overwhelmingly to allow liquor stores. We would be usurping their voice if we started saying, yeah, but we're not going to approve any of them. If we want to discuss how we're going to space these out, then my suggestion, as I made in the last meeting, is let's allow that process to happen, and maybe we postpone the approval of any liquor store to include this one until we've at least developed some governing properties that we're all comfortable with. Now, I know that you're very concerned about their spacing and their numbers, and we could look at, you know, developing criteria that says, as is allowable, we can't have two liquor stores within a certain amount of feet of each other. Or we want to increase the spacing that we have a liquor store from a school or from a church. I'm not discounting any of those factors, I'm just saying, I'd like them to be codified before we get too far down the road of just denying them as they come in. Because again, the citizens did tell us that they want the liquor stores in the area. Whether, whether they agree with it or not, I, it's, you know, that's certainly, that's certainly a valid thing to discuss prior to the vote of whether or not all premise liquor stores were going to happen. But at this point, the voters have spoken, I can't in good conscience say, well, I'm just not going to allow it regardless. With that, I would say, like I did last time, I will, I will make a motion to postpone this vote until such a time as we've got more developed criteria. A doubt will get a second, but at least make the motion, so that we can give this, an opportunity for us to develop better criteria.
Second.
Okay.
The way the wording is, it's part of the HEB facility, is what I understand. And as Councilmember said, about, I guess about 45, 50, maybe 60 feet down the way, there's another one that was going in. We're getting inundated with liquor stores. And of course, what we, we have been very careful in restricting them by distance from schools, churches, entrances to subdivisions, other major community facilities. And I've heard the comment that the market will, will determine who survives out of all, when you have a proliferation of certain types of businesses. And I have, don't have a warm feeling about the fact that we're getting so many liquor stores. And it's quite interesting, we've only had about two on the west side of 288, and all of these others are seeking establishment on the east side of 288. So, we must be better drinkers than those on the other side, I guess that's what they're anticipating. But it's, we've been, we're pretty, we're very strict on the requirements for them, and putting them into shopping centers probably is about the best place you can do to put one in. We don't want them isolated out on the streets and corners, but I'm not very comfortable with that many in town.
We have a motion, a second for postpone.
We have motion, second to postpone. We have a motion, second to postpone. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none?
Postpone.
Postpone.
That's our motion, a second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone this. We do have, any comments from council? Hearing none, we do, Mr. Secretary, we do have motion, second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
No.
We have a tie vote of three, three. To postpone.
I'll make a motion to postpone it.
Motion carried.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number two on our agenda, Councilmember Reed, would you do the order?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 2000-T-26, so moved.
Second.
We do have motion, second on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a series of text amendments to our Unified Development Code. One of the larger pieces of this being the, a new process for conditional use permits, seeking to make that a little bit cleaner for all parties involved, both in reviews and for the applicant. And then there's some other text amendments, cleanups and clarifications, recognize some other uses. And this is your second and final reading of this.
Council, have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'll be voting against this as I have the other two times, and my issue with the whole thing is the open air markets and the tree farms, which the state did pass their tree ordinance, which I think pretty much nullifies the reasoning we were passing ours. And I just don't see a reason to have two laws that do the same thing.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mayor. So, Councilmember Ordno, I did dig into a little bit of what the, what the state passed. It doesn't nullify our, our criteria. There's actually, from what I understand, minimal change to what we can enforce. Darren, if you want to speak to that more, in more depth?
Give you a short version of the new law. Essentially, what it does, it won't change dramatically what we do in our ordinance. We'll still apply our ordinance in the same way, but what we'll be required to do is when a developer is, or property... a developer is, or property owner is required to mitigate, uh, they will get credit, fifty percent credit for what they mitigate on their property, and then essentially what that would do is potentially, uh, give them a fifty percent reduction in, uh, in what they would pay as a part of their fee. If they're not mitigating at all, they'd pay the full amount, but when they do mitigate a percentage of it, they'll get a fifty percent reduction in that. So, that's what you'll see primarily in the change with respect to the new law. And that new law will kick in December the first, and so, uh, we will have to do a subsequent, uh, subsequent to this evening, we'll have to do a UDC revision to, uh, implement changes that are consistent with the state law.
So, again, why do it today?
Okay. Council, any further question or comment? We do have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
No.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion carried, five to one.
Moving in our agenda to item number three, Councilmember Ordno, would you do the order?
Consideration Possible Action, second and final reading of ordinance number CUP-17-00002, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Um, uh, this is a conditional use permit, again, second and final reading, uh, for a gas station on Pearland Parkway, and I believe John Lizer is at Cross Street.
Council, any question or comment on this item?
Mayor, I do. I have just some clarification on it, and, uh, going through and trying to look at this thing on the setup on it, it's a right-in, right-out on John Lizer. Is that correct?
If, if, while Trent's looking at that, um, you know, we'll look at the site plan specific when they come in through the, uh, development process. I don't know that they're tied in with any of those traffic considerations at this time with the, the use.
Well, it shows on here, uh, on the site plan, it's a right-in, it has to be two-way traffic, so it'll be right-out.
Excuse me.
And in addition, at the end of the property.
Everybody awake?
There's a right-in and right-out on that, or at least that's what it shows on the site plan of that. And I guess one of the things I'm concerned, if we're not to do a cut on the esplanade.
They don't meet the spacing.
They would need to meet the spacing requirements for driveways as well as median openings.
Well, there's space a little bit further down, uh, on the cut there, but I wouldn't be in favor of making a cut on the esplanade.
That'll, that'll make the car dirt.
So, but that's the only questions I have, is actually, is the location going in off of John Lizer, it's not that far away from the red light there, so, depending on how much traffic you have, we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna get backup there, because that's a right turn on the way on, on Pearland Parkway. And, um, so, then the other part of coming out down there, uh, further on down Pearland Parkway, I don't know what the traffic's gonna be, I know that Pearland Parkway picks up a lot of traffic in that particular area down there, so I don't know what congestion would be, uh, coming in and out of that location.
Are we, um, I know the site plan is included as part of the package, are we, um, are we including the site plan as part of the CUP approval?
Jay, do you want to mention, talk to that, or what, what the impact is of the site plans in there, reference, or locked in?
Today was the final day that we actually are doing the CUP process the old way, which the site plan is actually part of the ordinance, so this site pla, plan will be actually locked in with this particular request. Moving forward, next meeting, um, all, those site plans are no longer tied to the application.
And if, uh, if we approve today and the individual has some concerns that were brought up by, uh, um, or some remedies to the concerns brought up by Councilmember Owens, he would have to, because this is going to be accepted by ordinance, he would have to go through the old process, he couldn't do it through the new process because that is a resolution and not an ordinance, correct?
Potentially, there, I mean, there, there are some minor revisions, and of course, they have, they have to, have to actually be, um, in compliance with text dot regulations and whatnot, so there are some that, some minor. I'm sorry.
None of these are text out runs.
Okay, well, they have to actually, there are some minor resol, uh, revisions that are allowed up to, I think, ten percent of the site plan, but, uh, eventu, I mean, overall that, um, they potentially will have to actually do a new site plan and revise that site plan, because this is ordinance right now.
Uh, I would think so, yeah. Because of what we've approved thus far, there's no other remedy for this not to be accepted by anything other than ordinance as opposed to resolution, other than the, the individual reapplying, correct?
That's correct. The, the individual, if, if did not want to be tied to, uh, the site plan, would, would have to reapply and go through and have it approved in a different format, uh, which, under the new rules.
Is the applicant here? So?
Yes, the applicant is here.
Okay. Just, just so that you're aware. So, just so you're aware, you're on the tail end of, of one set of rules before we adopt a new set of rules. So, if you are going to make changes to this site plan, we approved this tonight, if you make changes to this site plan, you'll have to go through the entire process again, if the, if those changes are significant enough to where staff deems that you're in violation of the ordinance. You could reapply and have more freedom under the new rules, and to be able to modify your site plan, make changes without having to go through another CUP. So, it's up to you, how you want to, how to do that, but if, I mean, at this point, we're in a second reading, so we're probably, if we get approved, you're gonna be, you're gonna be kind of locked in by ordinance to this site plan. So, I want to make sure you're aware of that. So, uh, with that, I mean, I think we can, no other discussions, I, I'm fine with it. Um, you know, I, again, I'll, um, I'll express my preference that we allow the EDCM and the UDC to do their jobs, and not, not lock too much into the site plan, and allow them some flexibility to make changes without it having to come back to us.
Okay.
Please, my comments, Mayor.
Those are his comments. That's, you're fine. Okay, he's done.
Okay. Council, any other question or comments on this item?
Mayor, my only concern was on that of, of the traffic, and, uh, that it would, you know, generate there in that area, and that's, that's a high-traffic area when you start coming in off of John Lizer and Pearland Parkway. And so, that was my concern, and, and the second thing would be, if we, you know, I don't want to see a cut go across Pearland Parkway at that location. If you do, I mean, that would have to be signalization down there, and it's not that far from, uh, John Lizer and Pearland Parkway signal there.
Uh, Rob, is this large, is this development large enough to trigger a traffic impact analysis? So, its impacts are insignificant enough that we wouldn't even merit a closer look?
But it would, sorry, Councilman, it, it also, who wouldn't, distances on the driveway don't meet the criteria for a.
Sure, for a cut.
I'm sorry.
Got microphone.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman, the, uh, the driveway spacing on that has to meet certain criteria for the EDCM, and, uh, so therefore, your concern on cutting Pearland Parkway and putting another median cut in there, uh, we wouldn't, uh, be acceptable to that.
I remember, like, spacing on that, it's through the six hundred feet before a median of company.
Uh, yes, on, on a major thoroughfare, that is correct.
And so, that spacing's three fifty, so it's not even close.
There's also a median cut that's further up, that's already there, so we wouldn't split that again.
Okay. Any other comment, Councilman? Hearing none, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Let me see here. Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Given the information, I'll say aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed, absent from the chamber, uh, motion passed, five to zero.
Okay. That information is on the record, let's move to item number four. Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number 2017-200, so moved.
Second.
Do I hear a second on it?
Yes.
Okay, good. We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, staff did a snap, uh, professional services, uh, request, reviewed those late Friday, and, uh, Mr. Pearson's gonna, uh, be able to talk you through that a little bit, just to bring up speed.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Uh, what you have for you tonight is a contract for disaster recovery and public assistance consulting services, and the purpose of this is, um, to basically help maximize our insurance, uh, returns and our public assistance, uh, as we work through the disaster recovery of Hurricane Harvey. Um, of course, you get into insurance, and especially you get into public assistance with FEMA, and the rules are very complex, complicated, and, uh, there's multiple agencies we have to deal with, and so, from a capacity standpoint and an expertise standpoint, we basically are bringing, uh, proposing to bring this firm in as a staff extension to help us, uh, maximize, uh, what we get back, uh, through those processes. HGAC has existing contracts with awardees that we're able to use as a pool of applicants that we put out an RFP to, um, we received, uh, four of those, we shortlisted two of those firms and interviewed them Friday, and recommend to you tonight to award this to DCMC LLC, uh, and it'll be a unit price contract, uh, with a not to exceed, uh, two-hundred-thousand dollars is what we're recommending.
Only add, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, we did email you out some of those results earlier, and, uh, uh, the contract was attached to that, and then the proposal from the company is, uh, before you here for reference and taken with you.
Any other question or comment? Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. On the, uh, the memo that was provided right before the meeting, it discusses the, the potential FEMA reimbursement. Can staff briefly hit on that, and then as to where the, the funds that aren't reimbursed, how, how are we accounting for those in the budget?
Specific to this contract?
Yes.
Um, yes, this, it does fall under the, um, part of the funds that are recovery through the, uh, direct administrative cost, um, so we expect about sixty to eighty-five percent of, of, uh, of what's proposed here to be reimbursable. Um, I believe we've set us, uh, set aside some funding, um, and I may have to turn to, uh, finance to specify where that is, but some funding to help us through the recovery period for Harvey, uh, that will fund this, um, as we're waiting for reimbursements, much like we're waiting for reimbursements from, uh, uh, for, for debris removal and all those things as well, as those are, uh, only reimbursable to a certain percentage, um, as well. So, does anyone have anything from finance as far as the specifics on the funding?
We've set that up in a, in our solid waste fund, and we're gonna track everything there through solid waste, kind of makes sense. And then, we've, I think we have right at a million dollars in that particular account, and, um, if we get to the point where we were to exceed that with all of these items, we'd bring that back to you, but right now, that's how we're gonna track it in that particular account.
So, this is going through the solid waste enterprise fund?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. And thanks for staff for turning this around so quickly.
Any other question or comment from?
Yes.
Councilman?
Are, are there not, like, uh, companies out there that'd do this, like, on a percentage of what they get back for us?
I'm not aware of that, but I believe.
The other part of that would be, I don't know, the con, they allow that for the reimbursement if it's a finder's fee kind of thing, that'd be very odd.
Yeah, from a cost recovery standpoint, that may be why these are set up like that, is from a cost recovery standpoint and meeting the requirements of FEMA.
Okay.
Any other question or comment?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Um, so, how, and forgive me, I've not been able to go through, um, documentation that was presented just right before the meeting, so, uh, how local is this firm? Are they not?
I'm not aware that they're local, but Eric may have additional information.
Councilmember, their headquarters is in Alexandria, Virginia, right outside DC.
Do they have, um, have local offices?
Yes, the local representative who will be mobilizing with us next week is Jim Harris, he lives locally, and he is a former FEMA, former FEMA employee.
Okay. And so, the, the, generally, the contract is staff augmentation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, the, I'm sorry. The only question I, I have, to be honest with you, is the line item with respect to the debris specialist? Since we just awarded a contract for debris pickup and debris management, um, what services would they be providing us with respect to debris?
If we utilize that service, we just basically listed all of the, the services that staff could need, uh, if we want a second set of eyes on the project worksheet before it's submitted to TDEM slash FEMA, uh, for processing, just to make sure that, that we're in the best light not to have any of our reimbursement, uh, be obligated.
All right, so not to sound crass, but we're managing the management?
Well, I think in addition to that, we're also gonna start self-performing some of the debris pickup as well.
Okay.
And so, the documentation, as far as our manpower and equipment, um, we'll have to provide all that as well, and I think they could help in that area as well.
I, I guess my, my, my question is, i- is it duplicate to the other contract that we issued for debris management?
No, sir.
Okay. So, I feel comfortable, I feel comfortable, just, uh, it begs the question, at least to me.
And the dollar value is what, Mayor?
We're recommend, um, recommending we award this for two-hundred thousand dollars. It will be a, uh, hourly, not to exceed, so we'll pay for the, the hours utilized out of this contract. However, as, um, many of the sources of funds for recovery, uh, take many months and even years to work through all of the processes, and then you, and then, um, even beyond that, we'll be dealing with FEMA audits, um, it's likely that we will continue with this firm as long as they perform well and provide a good service for us, um, throughout the entirety of that process, which would, uh, likely include extending the contract and, and adding to the contract as we move forward.
I think on something like this, and given that's probably what it is, I think we need to read into the value of this contract, not to exceed a certain value.
Right at the time, we didn't, yeah, we didn't know what that amount was gonna be when the, the gen item was prepared, and so the, the motion could be modified to reflect that there's a limitation of two-hundred thousand dollars on the contract.
Yeah, I think we left it to where we need to read in the, uh, the, um, the consultant as well as the amount.
Well, then, I, um, I move to amend.
Did I clear your comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor.
We're gonna have a motion to amend.
Uh, uh, I move to amend, uh, the motion to include, uh, DCMC as the awardee, and for the dollar value not to exceed, uh, two-hundred thousand dollars without council approval.
Second.
It's a motion to what now?
A motion to amend.
Okay, gotta amend. Okay. Any question or comment from council on that? Hearing none, we do have a motion to amend, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Okay. We need to vote on the amended motion.
Okay, we do have an amended, amended motion, and, uh, does council have any question about the amended motion at this point? Hearing none, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero, as amended.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number five, and that would be Councilmember Owens.
Consideration Possible Action, Second Final Reading, Ordinance Number 1544.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the, uh, second and final reading, uh, we present to you a, uh, recommended budget.
We presented to you a recommended budget back in August now, and had a series of meetings with the council, public hearings, et cetera, on that budget. This is a budget for the entire entity, all of our funds, on a fund basis, and recommend your consideration. So, when the fiscal year starts, October one, we're ready to go.
Council, any question or comment on this item? Hearing none. We do have a motion second on the floor. Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number six. Councilmember Carbone. Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action, Second and Final Reading Ordinance Number 1545. I move the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate of .685059, which is effectively a 2.7% increase in the tax rate. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report on this item.
Thanks, sir. To support the budget that you just passed, property taxes are a major revenue source into the general fund and the entirety of, basically the entirety of our debt service fund. The rate that was just mentioned is the rollback rate that the state requires for calculation, and I believe that represents a balance of taking care of existing obligations, also putting us in a position to have a little flexibility going forward with several unknowns as we go through this post-storm event.
Okay. Council, have any question or comment on this item?
Mayor, I did. We already ordered pasted a budget on this, but I had a lot of free time this afternoon, so I got through all of this stuff. But I guess one of the things that concerns me on here, on the budget that we look at, is that, you know, when we were looking at a little bit of reduction on this, on the amount of revenue coming in, and what have you, I still say we're probably going to have a problem, number one. People that are flooded and left out of here with a plastic bag with all the rollings, no car, no house, no furniture, and possibility, no job. I don't think we're going to be getting the tax in here is what we really looked at in doing that, and the tax coming in at a particular time. So, I think there's going to be a concern of that. But I think also, as one of the things that when we looked at him not going with the 68.5, that, you know, the first things that we heard, we were not going to be able to bring in the police department as many people as we thought were going to be able to. We weren't going to be able to do several other things, the two mechanics that we're going to bring in. And this ties into one other thing that we got on the agenda, that's the last one on the agenda. And when I looked at that and got down to that point, and I'll discuss it again when we get that further down, we're willing to take a bid for mowing at $999,000 and something, but we're willing to take the second low bid, and not the low bid on there, and it cost us another $230, something thousand, actually, for the difference on that. $269, I think over three-year period time. But, you know, the thing that concerns me is when we go through this thing, and then we hear what we're going to lose in not being able to bring enough police officers, not doing the onboarding of fire departments, stuff that we're really have to do within council, the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And so, we find out that if we don't do these other things, then this won't happen. But then, when we get down to another area, we're willing to make concessions and give away, you know, $134,000. Is that right?
You mean nobody ever want to say it?
Start over.
Start over, please, Doc.
So, that's one of my biggest concerns on this, you know, this is not my first time on budgets and stuff, but there's a concern about that of what we've been told and what we've been looking at, even though approved, voted yes on the budget, it's just a voice of being concerned for the rate and what we were told in the beginning that things would not have to, you know, if we didn't approve that, or within that rate on there, that there would be concerns about people that weren't be able to bring on board and things of that nature. So, like I said, I'll vote on it, but I just want to voice my concern, and that's one of the things that I, that kind of caught my eye when I was going through and reading all the thirteen items on the budget for this time. And that's it, Mayor.
Second, please, your report. Council, have any other comments or questions? We do have a motion second on the floor. Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item number six. Councilmember Carbone. Excuse me, number seven is what I've got on my calendar here. Number seven, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action, Second and Final Reading Ordinance Number 1023 dash seven. So moved.
Second.
Have motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the ordinance dealing with the development fees and permits. Review those, and again, it's been part of the budget process, the revenue of that for folks that are accessing certain services to try to cover those, and review those on occasion to try to make sure those are keeping up. We don't have any dramatic swings in those, and recommend your consideration.
Council, have any question or comment on this item? Hearing none. Mr. Secretary, we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number eight. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action, Second and Final Reading Ordinance Number 1358 dash one five. So moved.
Second.
Have motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. These are non-development fees. This primarily are water and sewer utility system, which are self-supporting user fee programs. City has a variety of necessary capital improvements to expand and keep up, reinvest in the system, also keeping up with costs of services, electricity, labor, chemicals, all things that are essential for making the system run. And we also have a number of bond covenants which lock us in a large degree on the revenue requirements, so recommend your consideration.
Council, have any question or comment on this item? It's awfully quiet. Hearing none. We do have motion second on the floor. Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item nine. Councilmember Ordno.
Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2017 dash 188. So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
So, as part of the budget process, and I believe it's a state requirement as well and good practice, we do have a multi-year capital improvement program. The roads, utilities, parks, facilities, planning those out over time, which take a number of years. These include items such as the intersection of Dixie Farm and 518, and a wide variety of other road improvement projects as reference.
Council, have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, just one comment. This is, I believe this is the last, the last vote we're going to have, subject to the budget. I just want to commend staff for all the work y'all put in. It is an awful lot of effort that takes an awful lot of time for y'all to put all this together, and then we have to react to some of the comments that are made up here, and do that in short order, and provide us with the information that we request so we can make informed decisions. There is no verbiage I can use for the amount of work that has to be put in for, to get this accomplished and do it in such tight timeframes. And I really commend everybody who put in an effort, which is to include all our staff. I think everybody inputs into this at some point. So, thank all of y'all for your work. Thank you, Clay, for your leadership. I, it is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
And that's one of the ways we complete the development of our city is through the capital improvements program, and it's divided between the, actually, the physical instructive materials that we have, a part of our city we have to put together as well as the water sewer and impact areas. So, when they divide that between the two to be completed throughout the capital improvements plan, so it's quite an endeavor, so. Council, any further question or comment on this item? Hearing none. We have motion second on the floor. Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Motion carried six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number ten. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number 2017 dash 194. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, these are, next three are, the city has a, by formula, a certain number of votes for each of the counties, depending upon our proportion of the total valuation, and you get to nominate people. There's no guarantees, I believe, that these people will be appointed, but get, make nominations and see how the city's direction would be on that. And there was a communication that you have from, person who originally looked at reappointing or resuggesting for Harris, and they, I guess they're going off that after a number of years of service, and they'd suggested somebody else for your consideration.
Okay. Council, have any question or comment on this item? I think most of her, may have one time or another met Heather, but she's a quality individual. Hearing none. No comments either plus or against. We have motion second on the floor, sir.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, I'll do it. Moving in our agenda to item number eleven. Councilmember Owens.
Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2017 dash 193.
Second.
Is there a second on?
Yes.
We have a second. We have motion second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Same story, Mr. Mayor. This is the Harris County one.
And, Mr. Pearson, if I may, we'll need to substitute the name that you have there and put in the resolution, Mike Sullivan, if that's who you so choose.
I move to make that amendment.
Second.
Okay. The individual we had put on originally was, had been there for ten years, been a longtime friend of ours in Harris County, and his replacement was rather significant in that he is the former Prazler District Chairman in Harris County, so we're getting an upgrade there as well, so. Council, have any further question or comment? Do you have motion second, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Sorry about that. Amendment carried six to zero.
Okay, moving to item number.
They got to go back.
Yeah, moving to item number twelve. Okay. Did you amend that?
Yes.
Okay. We have an amended motion.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Okay, moving to item number twelve. Councilmember Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R 2017 dash 192. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report on that.
Missouri County side, as presented. This, this is on the Missouri County. I believe the name is still good on what you suggested.
Council, have any question or comment on it? We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Motion carried six to zero.
And to wind up our action items, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2017 dash 152. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. City has considerable amounts of rights away, public properties that were responsible for their care and maintenance, setting a good standard. We've, over time, continued to fine tune the inventory of those and the expectations and the contract language, and put that out for proposals. There was, this item was presented earlier, and there was a question, so we postponed, and we provided to council, and then I believe it's part of the packet too, just for everybody's information, point by point answers to that, but recommend your consideration as suggested there.
Okay. Any question or comment from council? You do have motion second on the floor.
I got it. I've got a question. Said I've got questions on here. You know, I, going back to previously when I was talking about the other thing a while ago, this bid, $999,936.95, that's not the low bid, that's the second low bid. And I know this was bid out on best value, or was to be on there, and just a few questions on it. I think there was something on irrigation that they come in and wrote in there that they would provide $100,000 worth of irrigation. Is that right?
It's, it's not $100,000 worth of irrigation. It's a, it's a irrigation control system so that they can remotely link into and control the irrigation system. I think that provides them some benefit when they're in the field, working with the irrigation system as well as maintaining that throughout the life of the contract.
But that was not something we asked for in the bid?
It was not something we asked for.
Okay, but it was in their letter that they sent you.
Correct.
Or did I?
Yes, sir.
I guess my concern is, you know, on a project this size, if you make 10%, you're lucky, profit on, on that. I mean, I've done many bids before. And here they're putting in $100,000, which would be 10%. putting in a hundred thousand dollars, which would be ten percent. So, that leads me into a couple of different areas on here. Either the bid was high that they're gonna make more than ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent profit, which I think is abnormally high for the moment. But said that, the second alternative would be if they put this in, that they would come back in, in year two and year three and get the bid, probably without going out for a bid about it. So, my concern is, the ones that we're recommending, they're a hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-nine cents higher than the low bid. And when I was looking at the, at the budget on there, even giving away that hundred thousand dollars, and if they get year two and year three, then we've actually given away two hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. And when we come into a budget period of time and we're looking for every dollar that we can get budget wise, it seems not to be good for us to be giving away a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars on there. I mean, you know, you ask for two mechanics on there and that was sixty-something thousand dollars a piece or whatever on that. And when we talked about lowering about of the rate on the budget from sixty-eight five down lower to that, then that was two physicians that are gonna have to go away. Or two police officers that was gonna have to go away. And things of that nature. Now, the money that we'd save, and this is good money, it's revenue coming in, it's not, if you look in it, you know, at coming in selling bonds to do it. So, this is actual dollars that are coming in. So, my concern is, is just, you know, going with the second low bid, even though I think they do a great job. I don't know if it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars worth of great job though. I mean, far as coming out of my pocket and some of these other people that's sitting in here now, paying taxes on it. So, that's really my concern on this, that, that we're doing that. And I understand, you know, they've been doing the job for us and they're gonna give you something in the beginning, but people just don't give a hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff away unless there's something on the back end somewhere. And the third thing that there's a concern with is that it takes time, money, and effort in putting bids together. And what is this telling people that bid on these items that we go out for bid, when, if they're low bid, they're not guaranteed they're gonna get anything? So, I mean, it's probably something this, this big with, what was it, nine hundred something items on, on bid, items on there to go through. I mean, that takes days. And especially for other people that are coming and bid on it, takes days and outriding the city to find the different locations and what have you. And to review those in order to come up with a, with a bid. So, that's my three concern that I have. I know I might be preaching to the choir up here, but, you know, when we're in a time that we're looking for money and people are hurting right now, I think, you know, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars is a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So, that's, that's my concern. Thank you Mayor.
Mayor, my, my comments would be, first off, I, I'm not a fan of outsourcing to begin with. I would much rather this state i- inside and we control the employees. I, I think there's a lot of benefits to that. Cost isn't always won, but the old saying of you get what you pay for, I, I think rings true in a lot of ways. And that's also why I don't like low bid. I, I would much prefer value because sometimes price isn't the end all be all. I, I don't know this company's business. I don't know why they're putting irrigation system in. I can tell you when we did it at the school district, it saved manpower. Your skilled people don't have to go out there and turn off sprinklers. You can do that remotely. You put less skilled, cheaper labor out in the field. So, it could be that they're saving more than ten percent on this. I don't know that. You know, that would be a question they would have to answer, but, but that is another option to why they might be doing this.
Do we, do we have history, any kind of history or any information on the, the project storm company?
What we had to evaluate them with, that they submitted along with their, their bid, was basically project history. And that was a big portion of what went into the decision because they didn't, what they submitted to us for evaluation was more of your large acreage, rough cut mowing type of contracts as opposed to the finished cut and what we require in the median. So, that was a big part of what, what went into the review and the recommendation.
You know, the, over the years, we've had to, our staff have had to negotiate a number of contracts with contractors and vendors and other types of support people. And I think they've developed a very good set of skills in determining what is the best contractor for us to work with. And they've worked pretty well with getting a price appropriate with the issue that we're trying to have serviced. And I think in this case, they probably spent an awful lot of time because of the number we knew it was gonna be a discussion item for our council. So, I think this is probably the best quality maintenance, landscape maintenance service contractor around. And we, they probably would've, would've made that decision. So, I, I support their decision making process on this. Counselor have any other, other question or comment?
Yes, is the, is, is Malanato here? Okay, thank you.
Just, just wanna know if he was listening.
Seventeen eighteen.
They do have a discussion.
Carbone, do you have a question?
Mayor, I just, I was gonna give staff a chance to address, I guess, I mean, there was a three, four page memo that outlines kind of what the, how you got to the conclusion of the best value and awarded that. Can you hit on those highlights? Because just at the surface, I agree with, with Councilman Owens. I mean, whether it's a hundred thousand or whether it's thirty thousand, whatever we can save, we need to save.
There are a lot of lawns and a lot of streets and a lot of curbs and a lot of trimming and mowing that's got to be done for this forty-eight square miles.
Sir, are you referencing the memo that went out a couple of weeks ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Does that complete your comment?
No. So, basically, as part of the requirement of the bids, we, we review past work and contracts and the size of those, as well as the type of work. And the information provided to us by Project Storm, the size of those contracts were not anywhere near the size of this actual contract, as well as, most of it was more of the rough cut type mowing. We did check references. The references were good. They just didn't really work in the scope and the type of landscaping work that this contract entails. So, our rough cut contract might be a good opportunity for them to look at bidding on that. As far as the irrigation enhancements, that really wasn't a part of the evaluation. That was just something that came along that they, that they offered. And my understanding is that it would be something that does save them manpower and the efforts to manage and maintain that system. As far as the nine hundred line items that has been mentioned a couple of times, basically that, that was all of our locations with basically the same type of line item on each of those locations. We do that because we do monitor and manage the contract by location. And so, we do, and then because each location's different, we do wanna allow them the opportunity to bid to each of those locations as they see fit. But typically, it's very similar, it's the same line items, just at different locations that make up the bulk of those line items. So, they, you know, it's not that they have to go figure out what the price is for each of those line items. Unless there's something unique about any particular site, then they have the opportunity to do so. There were some questions about being able to start. And there, there was no issue with pushing this back because we've extended the existing contract, allowing us to, to answer these questions and bring that back to you. So, you know, I think the, the main things that we looked at in qualifications was the experience of the firm, that they have a licensed irrigator on staff, they have a licensed pest and herbicide chemical applicator on staff. And then they provided references with landscape architects they've worked with as well as ten projects that we were to review. So, based on all of the submitted information and the, the existing performance of, the performance of the existing contract, we'd recommend moving forward with Malanato.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Real quick. So, where are we on consolidating all of our contracts?
So, this contract takes our, what we call our original median contract, mowing contract, which we added that to our mowing program. And let me, actually, let me back up just a step from that. Prior to taking, or starting to contract out the mowing services, we moved basically the mowing and the right of way management from the Parks and Rec Department over to Public Works. That allowed, you know, the, the folks that were actually permitting for utilities and the other folks working within our right of ways to be the same ones that were maintaining those right of ways. So, we moved that division into Public Works, created that division in Public Works, and then started moving. And it may have, we may have started moving into these contracts even before that. But, so we originally bid out the, the original median contract, and that was in May of 2014. That was about a hundred and fifty acres and contracted a value of about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Then we bid out our facilities contract. And that would've, that was also in, in May of fourteen, but it was separated out, I believe, from, from the median contract. So, two separate contracts. That one, about fifty-three acres and about two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And then we had a, another median contract that, that added an additional twenty-one medians that, as we phased out of, out of maintenance ourselves, that added seventy-seven acres, approximately two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And then we've added in different roadways as we've completed those roadways. But it took basically three large contracts, consolidated that into one large contract. So, what do we have in addition to that? We have our FEMA lot contract as a separate contract. And then our rough cut mowing and our open ditch mowing as separate contracts. So, kind of the next step in that is take more of the rough cut mowing, which is our open ditch mowing, as well as our detention podding of the rough cut mowing contract and consolidating those in the future. So, we'll basically be down to a couple of large mowing maintenance contracts as opposed to the four, five, six that we've been managing up to now. So, that does provide our staff, it, it, it really helps them out from a management standpoint instead of managing multiple and several contracts to manage the, the smaller number of large contracts. We do, in addition to that, we do some landscaping enhancements, which is some of our plantings and median enhancements and stuff like that. We do also do some of those with smaller contracts with more local firms that really don't have the capabilities of, of taking on a large mowing contract. So, that's some of the other overall work that we do out of the division.
Which, which contract is the treatment facilities under? Is it under this one or is it under the rough cut?
So, that one's the one that, that will be bid out next year. That one currently is the one that, that was being done in-house. And it's the last one that will move into a contract. And so, we'll either look to add that on to this contract because it's very similar to mowing our other facilities. And based on the size of it and the, and the volume of that, I think we'll look at that first before we move into a separate contract.
So, you'll?
And I say that without talking to the division.
So, you're, forgive me, just so I understand. So, it was, you're gonna move that as an extension of this contract and then look at separating or look at it as a separate contract and then look at amalgamating it?
Speaking without sitting down and, and I'm, I'm speaking from memory that we've talked about this and that we would look to consolidate, add this into this particular contract. But if anyone wants to nod their head, they're nodding their head.
Yeah, they're nodding their head.
I'm not making anything up.
Is, is the goal to eventually get all of the, all of the landscaping maintenance under one contract? Or are we always gonna try and?
No, I think it's the, when we get into the rough cut contract, that's really different equipment, different types of con, mowing contractors. You know, some of them have the capability of both, but we, since it's a different, different type of service, we, we look to keep those separate as, as, you know, in the foreseeable future.
What would the third one be? The FEMA lots?
FEMA lots.
Why would those be treated different?
Have to keep your funding separate for audit.
Oh, so we get reimbursed for the mowing?
No.
We just, we just gotta?
Just go audit.
Fair enough.
No, that, that, actually, I believe the parks are the one thing that we still maintain in-house out of the Parks Department. And some of that's due to the specialized equipment that they use on the, on the playing fields. That, that is, so we kept that in-house to this point.
But if I remember correctly, we did, we did do the maintenance of this in-house for a long period of time, but we, we got into contracting it out because we had a lot of staff that were, they were maintenance staff for the right of ways, but in the winter they just didn't have a whole lot to do. If, if, and forgive me if I'm wrong, but I, we had this in, prior to fourteen, we had most of this median, median landscaping done in-house, correct?
Yes, sir. I think, I think it was twofold. That we did do that in-house and, and there was that, you know, the seasonal aspect of it. In addition to, we have added a significant amount of additional new roadways with medians that need to be maintained over the, over the past, say, ten years. So, that's continued to grow.
Sure. When do we wanna go out for the rough cut contract? I know you wanna talk.
I'll go back out to January, sir.
Okay.
January.
I'll say this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it. It's a best value contract. You know, I've, I've heard the concerns. I, I can't say it's not lost on me that the difference in the value, but I, I'm trusting staff, that staff made the best decision. They factored all that stuff in. I mean, that's what we, that's what we pay them to do. We trust them. I trust them to make the best decision. The rough cut contract's coming up. We have other contracts coming up, so the low bidder will have an opportunity. And I wanna encourage them to continue to bid.
You know, I was just wondering if we might come in and read into this, change it to the dollar amount set up in the contract, the takeout of proposed contract term of one to two years subsequent, two more years on the contract renewal options. And if we just make it a one-year contract and then it can come back up again?
Councilmember Owens, I know you asked the council that.
You're welcome. You can certainly do that, but this will come back up before you next year again. So, you would have the ability to say, you know, it wasn't a good contract, or we might even recommend, we might not recommend it. I doubt that, but it's only for one year. The other terms have to come back before you.
You just don't have to go out for our opinion.
Correct.
The thing about it is it's available upon the mutual agreement of both parties. And, and again, you know, to, to council, so.
If, if I could add a little bit, to be fair, I think there might be a little bit element of change in, you know, what everybody saw the first time through if we're just say, no matter what, we're gonna go out and go for proposal next year. I mean, there's gotta be a fair amount of, of ramping up and commitments for equipment and so forth. So, I think it's in the city's best interest to, you know, as long as you're performing, you know, you're gonna get a fair look for multiple years. So, that'd be my only concern about automatically saying, we're gonna go out and go out for proposals in one year away. So, I just don't know if that'd be frankly fair to, to anybody that looked at this and had anticipated that, you know, as long as they were gonna do a good job, that they were gonna be able to keep after for at least a couple of years.
Any other comments or questions over this? Complete your comments.
We do have, we're, to the point where we have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Owens, no.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Motion carried forward to.
Okay, with that information, that completes the action items for the council agenda. We, I'm gonna do something that I think probably is to correct, probably a misunderstanding. We have a requirement that during the business and the sections where we have our actual activities of our council, which is called new business section on our agenda, when we go through that process, when you come in the door, you're supposed, if you wanna speak on that, you probably should've filled out one of these forms before we started. And sometimes people don't really understand that particular requirement being maybe new and first time for council meeting. So, I'm gonna make an exception for a gentleman who's, who did not speak during the period in which his action was being considered. Avik Desera?
Yes, sir.
And please come up and make your comments that you'd like to make at, at the time. I know that you misunderstood, so I'm gonna correct that, make the misunderstanding and give you a chance to, to share your thoughts on that particular. That's item number one on our new business agenda, which we postponed. And, and. Please proceed. Give your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Avik Desai. And my address is three zero one one Glenwood Drive, Padla in Texas. And thank you, thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members to let me speak right now. And I just want to clarify, I, I just, after, after you voted for postponement and it was a tight vote and I wasn't sure, and then I, I went to the city secretary and he said, yeah, it was postponed. And that's the reason I'm speaking right now. And I, I didn't prepare any speech, so I'll just speak from my heart in all honesty. I will just, in, in a couple of minutes, like you say, quickly lay down from my perspective I will just, in a couple of minutes, like you say, quickly lay down from my perspective, as a person and a businessperson who's coming with a prospective business. When I applied for CUP, I looked into the process, saying it's a 60 to 90-day process, and before even applying for CUP, we, with like big landlords, like HEB, we have to get a lease signed, and our rent meter starts running, I'm paying a hefty rent on that. And all this, I understand, it's not, it's not a concern of the city in this sense, but I'm looking at the process, saying I will get my voting, my first voting, that was last week, second voting this week, and I'm putting my plans in that sense. And I, it's already postponed, I understand, can't be done anything, but I only am requesting is that from, get some clarity from your side where I stand and when actually I'm going to get a final answer, yes or no. I mean, and a couple of other things, like HEB, when, they are the landlords here, they gave us the leases. I understand, like, they have the beer and wine license here, but it's not HEB themselves, they don't, they don't mind us having a liquor business there. They, being the landlord, allowed us to come there and put a future business there. Other businesses around us, I understand they are, they are there, but it's, we, that's why we went into a good location where, again, from a business point of view, I see it as a good location, so, I mean, I just, I just want to request city council here, just to get the vote in and get clarification, I mean, at least, at least have a final on this. Like I said, when I applied for CUP, I was expecting it to be a 60, 90, and the irony is, we are talking about, because I have been to a few meetings here, that we are trying to shorten the CUP process, but in technicality, when I applied, I applied in early June, and it's already been close to four months now. So, in future, we are talking about shortening this process. I've been paying rent for almost five months, where I have applied personally for four months, and I still haven't got an answer whether I'm going to have a business there or not. And that's my concern right now, even in the next meeting, which I'm not sure when it is, but if I'm going to get a yes or no answer, council members and Honorable Mayor.
Mayor, if I may, just quickly, and I guess I should have made these comments earlier. This body and members of this body specifically wanted the CUP process to become easier, and we're telling somebody in the middle of, I mean, they've already passed first reading, if we're going to vote it down, let's vote it down today. We're going to vote for it, let's vote it up today. But it makes no sense to give this businessman a, we're going to reconsider this to another date. I mean, council members have said what they're going to do, council member Owens said what he's going to do, we all know what our vote is. Why not give him some clarity that he's speaking about and do the CUP process as we've, we've stated that we want to make it so much easier on the business owner that comes into Pearland, we've made this more difficult than possible for this guy specifically because he's already passed the first reading. And what we're telling him is that, you know what, when you come back, we're going to wait for somebody else, some other body or some other group to change the rules, and then we'll have justification to mark him down. If we're going to deny him, let's not deny him today. If we're going to approve him, let's approve him today. I can't make the motion to reconsider because I was on the losing side, so only someone on the winning side can make a motion to reconsider for this to be voted on today. But I'm 100% with you, I think there's members up here that are with you. There's no reason, if, I'm not, I'm not opposing us changing up the process, but we've already reached this point with this specific person, with this specific application. Why are we stopping right now and saying, you know what, let's let somebody else, a body down the road that arbitrarily may be put together or not, to decide on how we're going to do liquor stores from now on?
I believe we can discuss that right now.
Yeah, if I could, just going to address the unique procedural aspect of what's going on here. Obviously, since the gentleman came up to speak at the end and at the chair's discretion gave him the ability to address something that was considered earlier in the agenda, and that's fine. The dilemma there is that because it's not an agenda item right now, it's like a citizen's to be heard and would generally not have any dialogue going on. That being said, as Councilmember Reed just indicated, the only way it could be considered and discussed this evening would be as if there is a motion to reconsider. That motion was a motion to table that item that was approved four to three, and it would have to be one of the four members of the council that voted in support of that motion to table who would have to bring it back to, as a motion to reconsider. That would have to be seconded and then that voted upon in order for that to be discussed and then voted on any further this evening.
I'm motion to reconsider.
Second.
Okay. A motion, there's been a motion to reconsider which was seconded, and so Mayor, we could take a vote on the motion to reconsider, which is not debatable, that would then, then it would be brought back up for consideration.
Okay. Is the council ready to reconsider at this point?
We're about to vote on the motion.
I know.
On the motion.
Yeah. Okay. If you are ready, then we have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Motion passed four to two.
So now, the original motion was the motion to postpone, and so that has now come back to the count, that was the motion to, that was the motion that was reconsidered, so we're sort of working backwards now. Okay? So now, now you're reconsidering the motion to postpone, and then you can vote on that. If you vote to not postpone, then you would end up voting on the actual original motion to approve that.
So just for clarification for...
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is if the motion, because you're going to reconsider the motion to postpone, if that motion to postpone fails, now you're going to vote on the original motion that was presented.
So it's still the same, an a vote is to postpone, a nay vote is to hear it tonight.
That is correct.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to postpone.
Correct.
Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
To postpone, no.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
No.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yeah.
Councilmember Carbone?
Yes.
We have a three to three tie.
That didn't hit us anywhere, that's a waste of time.
Mayor?
You're on the tie.
Consider it at the night, eh? Three of us do, three of us don't.
I think, I think we need to make a decision tonight, or we're going to have to do it tonight, or come back again at a future time to make it, I'm going to go guess.
That would be, unfortunately, the vote would be no.
My vote would be no.
Yeah, I must take this.
My yes is no.
We can still call no.
Sound like a first date, doesn't it?
Now that the motion to postpone has failed, we now have the original ordinance that's been presented that would need to be voted on.
Okay. Now we're back, we're back to consideration.
We're back to the river. We've undone everything.
And I really want to say thank you, at least, at least.
We have a second and final reading.
May not go your way.
We have a second and final reading of ordinance CUP 1700013.
Just, Councilmember Owens just asked, what was the official recommendation of the planning zone commission on this particular...
That was a two to two tie, so voted no.
Let's see.
Mayor, I believe if it was a two to two tie, which is...
I believe that was a two to two tie, but I will confirm it in just a second if I can find it, here it is.
Sure.
The motion to recommend approval failed by a vote of two to two.
But, and just to clarify, it still only requires a simple majority of the council to be approved because the conditional use permits are not zone changes.
Got you.
Okay.
And the reason I supported the motion to postpone is because the P&amp;Z is working on some guidelines in terms of where to put the packaged liquor stores that can address, I guess from what I've heard, Councilman Owens and Councilman Perez is concerned. Nobody wants a liquor store on every corner weighed out with the fact that an overwhelming majority of the residents that voted, voted to approve the liquor store, so that was my reasoning to support the postponement is to see what comes out of the P&amp;Z report.
And, and, well, go ahead. And I have an issue with it, when we're halfway through this process, now we're changing the rules on somebody. That's just not right. If we're going to change the rules, we need to go ahead and finish this, and then the next one that comes up, those new rules will apply. This is the second reading for this. I just, I don't understand how we're going to stop and say, oh, guess what, hold on, we're going to make up some rules that you're going to have to follow now, even though that we're on the second reading. It's just not right.
And P&amp;Z has been coming up with that since before last week's vote. We voted on this, wasn't it last week?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Moore, I mean, at this point, I mean, he's in the middle of the actual voting process.
Mayor and council, I just want to make clear too that we're all, I understand, and I met with John McDonald last week, and we went over a number of things, and I think Jay left, but this is just start, I don't want to say starting, but the material was being prepared, it's going to go to the P&amp;Z, you know, probably, I would think maybe October, maybe some come November, December, I mean, just timeline-wise, any new rules, if any, are a couple, three months out.
Yeah, and that's ridiculous.
I just say that.
Absolutely ridiculous.
I appreciate it.
We've gone through three council members making comments, and I think it's only fair that the rest of the council will do the same thing. Come for Ordno?
I know what my vote is.
I'm going to, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote for it, as I did before, but the reason I, I put it on there to postpone is that there are two sides of this coin. There is the roomful of citizens who did ask us to be more cautious about what it is that we are approving. Now, I understand, but I have nothing but sympathy for an individual who is, who's caught in the middle of us making changes. Part of the sympathy is that he entered into a lease before he got his approval, and we've said before on numerous occasions, buyer beware. Again, I will vote for it because I don't think that there is anything meritorious right now in the criteria that tells me that I should not vote for it, but there was another side to this that we are ignoring. Again, there was Laney Cade and a whole team of other people that were concerned about the lack of specific criteria as to where we are accepting these. So, I would at least venture to say, as, from now until we've created those criteria on, let's hold off on accepting any more of these, at least that's what I would implore us to do, and so we can get both people some clarity as to how we and what we're going to do from now into the future to accept these and how we're going to space them out and how we're going to address the citizens' complaints.
Mr. Perez? A person of just a few words. But, yeah, you know, I really don't have a hard burning...
No, I understand, sir.
But I, the thing that I have is the concern of so many. I mean, yours is on Pearland Parkway, backs up there, you go down to Berry Road, you've got one sitting there on the corner, you go across the street over there, you've got another one behind the, in other words, that's where the, the old used to be over there, but behind Starbucks over there. And so, I mean, you know, they're within walking distance, and now we've got one that wants to go in Pearland, or, excuse me, on 518 at Liberty, right where the police officer was killed, and that's one that's still out there pending on that. And then if you take a look at the others, you know, if you go down 518, you get, or Pearland Parkway, you've got one down there, you go within a mile of our city limits into Friendswood, you've got two sitting there, you've got one on Cullen, you've got one on Telephone Road, how many do you need? I mean, you know, that's my concern, I don't care where you have, but the thing about it on the liquor store, I don't care about that, but I just think we've gone really crazy, you know, of putting in so many liquor stores within walking distance of the other. I think it's just outrageous that we're coming in and doing that and blaming it on the citizens because that's what they voted for, but they didn't vote to put one on every corner. So, that's my concern, my vote will be no this year.
Okay, I guess we need to, any further comments from council? I think we have ready for motion second. On the floor?
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Motion passed four to zero, four to two. And let me give you the ordinance number on that.
Thank you, sir.
CUP...
C. That brings us up...
Item number one.
It's, that's ordinance number CUP 1700013.
Okay, I think that officially ends our new business portion, and moving at number seven, item seven, mayor council issues for future city council agendas. Council, have any future items?
No, sir.
Hearing that, let me move down to the next item, which is announcing an executive session of the Texas Governor's Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters regarding appointments to the boards and commissions for the city. Section 551.072 for consultation with city attorney regarding the purchase, lease, or exchange of real property. And actually, as we go into executive session, we can discuss these items with our staff and other individuals relative to these particular items, but we cannot make a decision in executive session. But when we return to open session, we do have the option and responsibility to make a motion and complete the item that we are discussing. So, when we come back, we will do that. This time, we will recess into executive session at 810, excuse me, 817. Council has returned from executive session. At 9:35. And moving to new business item number one under executive session, personnel matters regarding appointments to boards and commissions. I think at this point, we have, we've made a decision and that we will be contacting you as appropriately. Item two is section, council faces city attorney regarding the purchase, lease, or exchange of real property. The actual will be taken this item at this time. There being no further business before council, and we are adjourned at 8:37.
9:36. 9:36.
Excuse me. 9:37. 10:37.